...to order, let the minutes take her, please call the roll.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes, here.
Alderman Jacob?
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Catalano?
Here.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Here.
Alderman Messina?
Here.
Alderman Woods?
Here. I declare a quorum. Next approval of the meeting minutes are regular meeting, March 8th, 2018.
A move. I have a second.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Next, report and recommendation, approval to draft an ordinance granting approval of a special use plan unit development and major site plan review for the redevelopment of White Oaks Park. Ms. Christie, you're gonna take that?
Yes, thank you. As the chairman mentioned, this is for the White Oaks Park redevelopment, and it is pertinent to the special use plan unit development, or PUD as you'll see it called, and major site plan review. Couple of things I want to just bring to your attention is that this application is limited to a special use approval, plan unit development, and the major site plan review. And again, it is strictly based on the zoning regulations and compliance with those and the comprehensive plan. I do want to remind the council that this is the same process that Central Park went through in 2016.
Alderman Messina, you have a question?
I do. So, I would request, Director Elman, you have the FAQs printed out? Could you, for those that want them, could you make them available on the table, please?
Okay, continue, Ms. Christie.
So, the location of the park is at the southeast corner of Wooddale Road and Montrose Avenue. It is in a residential zoning district, which is why there is a need for a special use approval. And again, this is consistent with Central Park's process that we approved two years ago. The existing conditions, as we go through and just kind of remind people of what is on the site, there is currently a cabin facility. Whoops, I apologize. If I can get to my note. The maintenance building with outdoor storage, which is up here, two dog play areas, which are shown in green, a classroom, storage building, and other accessory structures, which are shown in the purple. There's a surface parking lot, existing trails, and then, as you can see in the blue, those large number of wetlands on the property. Here's a picture of the cabin structure, the existing dog play area, and then the existing trails. The proposed plan and the renovation of this park includes replacing the cabin with a new recreation building, which is located in approximately the same spot on the site, and that is proposed to be approximately 2,300 square feet and will house park district programs. They are also looking to expand the parking lot to provide 61 total parking stalls and provide permeable surfacing, which is on the outer edge, as well as some permeable surfacing adjacent to the proposed new building. They have also proposed to replace the screening, or the fencing, rather, along the outdoor storage area to provide better screening, eight-foot tall board-on-board fence to better screen what's behind, associated with the maintenance. They're also looking to create an open meadow. As the trees die in this area, they will not be replaced. They're looking to renovate dog play areas, add a playground, a gazebo, a fire ring, and camping area for scout activities. They're looking to enhance the existing trail, make some wetland improvements, which would be to remove invasive species, and also then to add some additional native plantings. They're looking to construct, or have constructed, an aerial adventure course, which would be up in the trees, and then finally, create a Spartan course and additional trail connections. The new recreation building is depicted here in this rendering, which will have many similar features as the existing site in terms of trying to be energy efficient and also using some natural products. The PUD is proposed to be phased into three phases. The first one will be, is expected to be completed within 18 months of approval, and includes the expanded parking lot, the new recreation building, the aerial challenge course, a new loop walk or maintenance walk, landscaping, including the open meadow where possible, and then the fence replacement at the maintenance building with some additional fabric screening along the other edges. Phase two is depicted here in blue, where in addition to the boardwalk and the trail to the pedestrian, to provide the pedestrian connection to Oak Avenue, they're also will be doing wetland improvements in phase two. Phase three is depicted here in the green, where they intend to replace dog play areas, provide the playground, camping area with the fire ring, Spartan course, and then enhance trails with interpretive signage. As I mentioned, this, the Unified Development Ordinance does require a special use because it is residential zoning, and the, again, similar process that was used for Central Park. The, there was a prior special use for this property, but because the renovation of this use, it requires then a new special use approval. The proposed phasing, as I had mentioned previously, is indicated here, but this is also, the CDC did have, hold a public hearing on this petition on April 16th. The draft minutes are in your packet, and they did recommend approval with eight conditions. They did find that it was consistent with surrounding zoning and land use classification. They found that it met the requirements in the UDO and is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. They did find that it meets the standards of approval. These conditions are similar to the ones for Central Park, where they do require substantial compliance with the plans that are attached to staff memo. The phasing is a little bit different, where phase one, as I indicated, three, 18 months. Phase two is three years, and then phase three is estimated to be completed within six years. One of the other requirements is to maintain overflow parking arrangements to meet the parking need of the various uses of the site, or modify the programming as necessary, and the park district has indicated that they would be willing to do that. The driveway modifications that are required at Wooddale Road are needing to be approved by DuPage County in terms of right-of-way permitting and meeting of their standards. There is a requirement, or rather, a proposal, to provide 16-foot stalls, which is acceptable according to the UDO, but they do need to ensure that there's no landscaping impediment within that two-foot overhang. They all, they also will need to upgrade the Montrose Avenue crosswalk at Wooddale Road to provide a high-visibility crosswalk and provide a mid-block crossing, approved by the city engineer at Oak Avenue, and that is part of phase two. The CDC did recommend an eighth condition, and it is crossed off here, but essentially, the concern was that the, the traffic study did not specifically mention the summer school activities of the school, Oakbrook Elementary School, or Oakbrook School. And so, KLOA, which is the traffic engineer that conducted the traffic study for the park district, did submit a supplemental letter indicating that the traffic study did account for traffic of the school district, or, excuse me, of the adjacent school during its normal daily operations during regular school. And so, since the summer school will be a reduced operation, that it does fully account for the traffic impacts therewith, and therefore, staff is suggesting that the eighth condition has already been met. And that concludes my summary.
Okay, thank you. So, I can see that we have a large crowd, and I know a lot of people want to talk. In general, at the committee meeting, we don't let the public speak, but since there's so many of you, and I know that this is a hotly contested issue, and people are passionate about it, we're gonna allow people to talk. We're gonna limit you to one minute, and it has to be focused on what we're here to talk about. And if it's a repeat thing, you know, if we could give everybody a chance it has an idea or a concern to be expressed, the opportunity to go up there, I think, unless anybody on the council has an objection, we'll start out with letting the audience ask questions or present their concerns. Oh, you'll have to go to the podium and give us your name and address.
My name is Ted Rourke, 101 Oak, and I guess I'll try to condense what I was gonna say, but...
Excuse me. So, if you're gonna kind of speak for a lot of people and address a lot of concerns, I'll afford you a little more time to do that. I just know with a big group, if everybody wanted to talk three minutes, we, you know, we'll be having breakfast.
Okay, well, yeah, I'll try to make this as condensed as I can. You know, some of our, some of our concerns are with the, you know, with the timetable and the structure that happened with this from our perspective. It's, it seemed like in, in March, they decided to put this plan together. In June, they developed focus groups that included neighborhood, neighbors around the site, except I really haven't found people that were around the area, the park itself, that were in the group. And so, that was in June 2016, and I want to point out, at the time, people were making decisions on if we should have an aerial park in this park. The Edge Adventure wasn't even open for business. They started their first, they opened their first park July 2016. So, in June 2016, we were making decisions about putting an aerial park in there. July 27th, 2016, there's a meeting, well-attended, but, and I was there at that meeting, and it was well-attended, but there was, there was very, what I remember was very few people being in support of an aerial park. A lot of people were in support of improving the park, but not putting an aerial park in there. Due to that strong opposition at that meeting, I was under the impression that we were gonna pursue improving the park, but not putting the aerial park in. I thought that was shelved. You know, January 25th, 2017, there was another meeting, but I didn't go to that meeting, I wasn't aware of it. The park district reported, the majority attending indicated that the support for this project. So, I guess I just haven't, I haven't met people that went to that meeting. April 2017, one of the group had a email from, from Matt in the park district saying that the White Oaks renovation project is, isn't the top priority, and it's kind of on the back burner right now. I have that email, if you guys want to see that. And up to April, I didn't really hear anything about the aerial park. And there was a four, you know, there's a four-page White Oaks Park concept plan that was posted, you know, on the website, and it was up there till about, you know, last week. So, we've got the new 15-page response now, but the other four-page response was out there up till about a week ago. So, someone, the first paragraph that referenced the adventure course said, "This park feature is only being examined at this point." The following, in the following four paragraphs about, about the aerial park, it says, "No lights other than for security at the entrance of the course would be installed. The course would be placed in a northwest corner of the park, far away from any residence. The park district is examining Franz and Grove as a possible alternate site." And then we had the meeting, we had the meeting on April 16th, and it was a hearing on this park to approve the zoning variance for the park development. So, the park district gave a presentation, very much like they did tonight, and they also gave a presentation that had a PowerPoint thing with 33 bullet points, all of them said "met." And, you know, there was, one of the members challenged the traffic study, so they did something more with the traffic study, and there were no other points that were challenged. Citizens spoke their concerns, and the park district responded, and as well as Edge Adventure responded. And then, but these, these could not be considered within the context of the vote, and the, and the zoning board approved the variances based on all the items being met. So, there's a presentation saying everything's met, and nobody challenged, they only challenged one thing about it being met, so, so then it's approved. And that was the first time that I saw this, you know, this whole program. You know, it's a projection, 18 months timeframe, to build an aerial park, to build a big new parking lot for the aerial park, and to build a new office buildings that would hold, you know, the office for the aerial park. And it said that additional improvements to the park is in three, three years and six years if funding's available. So, it's very front-loaded. This aerial park is really, really important to this park improvement program. And then Tuesday, we came out with this 15-page overview about the White Oaks Improvement Plan to answer any of the questions from the last meeting. So, you know, to me, the aerial park went from a proposal that didn't look like it had significant support to a done deal, and it was the centerpiece of the park improvement. And we've been talking to people around the park, at least, and they just didn't seem to have the awareness of, that that was gonna, that it was at this state, and this was a done deal, and it's gonna happen. So, I just, I just wanted to see a quick show of hands from people in here. How many people were aware of the scope of this?
Ted, Ted, no, we can't, we can't, we can't do any polling or testing.
So, to this...
Excuse me, why not?
That's okay, that's okay. To this day, to this day, I still don't understand how Edge Adventure Park could be selected for this project based on their proven track record, when it doesn't look like they were even in business when the decisions were made. In the 15-page posting, it says, "In the late summer of 2017, the board asked Edge Adventure to do the quoting. They picked them, they said, 'You're the guys.'" At this point, Edge Adventure had been open for only a year, and even as of today, they've only been open for one and three-quarter years. So, how, I, I don't understand how we made that decision that this was the guy when they've only been in business a year. So, and most of my concerns were not addressed in this meeting, or even with this latest publication. You know, the kind of things that, we, we would like to see specific clauses or something written into this thing, if you guys are gonna do this, that kind of protect that area. You know, the things about parking in the street, and trash, and noise, and increased neighborhood potential vandalism, and how many buses you could have in a day, and safety at night. So, I just want to talk about just two specific issues. And that was listed in the, in the new thing that you just got, page nine, paragraph two, two, "When would the course be open, and how close would it come to park residents?" So, in this thing that you've got, it says, "The course is being located no less than 250 feet from any adjoining properties in the northwest section of the park." So, so the response to our concerns about how close is this gonna be to our properties is, "The aerial adventure course will be located no less than 250 feet from the aerial adventure parking lot." So, that, that really doesn't address, that doesn't address my question. During the 416 meeting, Matthew specifically stated, "The stipulation in our agreement with Edge Adventures is that they cannot construct any closer than 250 feet from the residence. That is restriction regardless of which border." And I took that off the YouTube video that they recorded. It's at time mark 22:15:50.
Mr. Rourke, if you could wrap it up.
Okay, so, so this, if you look at where this is, that thing is about 42 feet from the road, and the other, and the trail number two is, is 56 feet from the road. So, that's like 14 yards and 18 yards, and it's 88 feet and 102 feet from the property line. Not from where the guy mows his yard, from the easement line from that property, you know, in the corner of Elmwood and Montrose, in that area. So, that, you guys stated, all the criteria was met, so two out of the five of these courses, 40 percent, don't meet that requirement. So, if you approve this plan today, how can you approve this plan today if it doesn't meet the requirement? So, the other thing is on, is on the course at night. So, how, how the course operators handle security and safety. And it says, "At night, they would pull up the ladders at night from the meeting, the last meeting we had, and that it would be up to the local residents to call the police if people were on the course at night." That's what they said at the last meeting. And they addressed it, on the new thing, addressed it. It says, "When the park is not in operation, all starting ladders are closed, boarded or removed to restrict access to the course." They also had a statement in there that says, "They fully understand that fences and locks will keep honest people honest. If there is a vandalism, they have a full-time maintenance leader who will respond." And I think they've completely missed the boat. This, this isn't about using the course for free, and, and it's not really about vandal, vandalism to their course. The question is, how are we gonna keep our kids off of this course at night? You know, looking at this, I look, if you, if you scale out this course, just five courses, that looks like it comes to about 3,388 feet. You're talking 1,129 yards, 11 football fields of, of these courses that you're jamming into this little tiny park. So, I gotta ask you guys, what are you thinking? Tell me exactly what about this plan don't you get?
Mr. Rourke, if you could...
Yeah, just about, just about. You hired all these consultants, and nobody could point this out to you guys. So, that's the conclusion, that's all we need to do, is to pull up the ladders. So, help me out, guys, I'm struggling for the words to try to describe this decision. Is it woefully inadequate? You know, you could ask anybody, say, anyone in our police department, if this would pose a safety problem. So, to these kids, this is a giant playground. It's a giant playground in the sky, 11 football fields long. It's like hanging candy in the trees. You're giving them a lot of incentive to get into this thing at night, you know, and the kids won't be wearing safety harnesses. And better yet, let's put it 15 feet from the yard, so it's right in front of them. Better yet, let's put it right next to a school.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rourke.
I just wanted to throw in, I just wanted to throw in one last statement regarding this, that, that, you know, it's in about, it's about accountability and responsibility. So, you guys have the final vote on this, and it goes, once you guys vote, it goes through to the park district, and it's probably a done deal. And that's your responsibility. And it's our responsibility that for every kid, for every kid that gets injured at night on this course, it's our responsibility to remind the public specifically who it was that approved this project, despite being made aware of the safety concerns and choosing to do nothing to address them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rourke. Is there anybody else in the public that would like to add something to that, or have some other concerns that weren't covered? Yes, sir, if you could step up to the podium and give us your name and address.
I don't have a speech like that. He did really good. Thank you very much. My name is Thomas Speed, and I live at 216 Hiawatha Trail. I don't understand why you're trying to squeeze something like that into a wooded area like that. How many trees are gonna be, you said you weren't gonna cut any more trees without special permits years ago. How many trees are gonna come out? And then you got the safety, like he said, how many, we're gonna be sued left and right because somebody's gonna get into there or get hurt there. It's ridiculous. Why didn't you pick a place on the other side of Irving Park? Or over by you, Mayor, maybe you got a place over in the retention pond along the tracks? Maybe they can put it along there. Why are you putting it along by, the people don't want that noise, even, even at Halloween time, okay? You're gonna have that every day, screaming and whatnot. You can't, can't do this. Why didn't you put it over there by the other school or something? Take away the park, put it over there. Don't have to put it by people. Have it over somewhere else. You got a lot on your property. Put it over there by Third Avenue over there, by that pond over there, and have to, oh, going around and everything. It's ridiculous. You people.
My name is Paul Cislay, with 365 North Central in Wooddale. Eugene, you're my Alderman. Okay. Just a brief, brief statement. Has anybody been by the Edge Ice Arena across the street? The climbing wall, the zip line, has anybody seen, anybody used that lately? Or in the last few years? It was one and done, one year and done, and I think that's exactly where this thing is going. One year and done. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody?
Yeah.
Sure.
Thank you. My name is Kimberly Molinaro. I live at 112 North Walnut Avenue. If you don't know where that is, I live right next door to Calverly Park, right next door to a park that I have to listen to constant noise. I can't have my windows open because there are teenagers there till 10 o'clock, sometimes two in the morning, shooting baskets. I've had people knock on my door to use the bathroom. I've had garbage thrown all over my front yard. I do not want to see this right across the street from me. I don't want to deal with the chaos that I'm already dealing with. And if you think that you're gonna give me security or police attention to drive through that parking lot, you're not. You don't do it now. I have dogs in the park. You're not supposed to have dogs in the park. I have teenagers in the park after 10 o'clock. Where are the police then? And you're gonna patrol this? You're gonna watch this area like you do now? That's not happening now, and I don't think you're gonna do it then. Furthermore, I have neighbors who will be coming up here too. We don't want the constant traffic and the overflow in the parking lot right next to our homes. And the kids in the park. This is gonna be a seven-day operation that we are going to have to suffer. Our property values are gonna have to suffer. And the noise, which we already are dealing with overhead at this point. Now, you're gonna add more noise. Good luck selling your house, ever, if you're planning on leaving. Take into consideration the people that are in this room, the people that put you in these chairs. Listen to what we are saying. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Todd Cox. I live at 115 North Wooddale Road, probably one of the closest houses to the park, right behind Kim. So, I'll try not to repeat other things that everybody has said here, but I'd like to start out by saying, I think I'm pretty well-informed and involved in the community. I'm vice president of the school board, and I've known about this project for 40 years. That's, we got one letter in the mail about a month ago, talking about the improvements to the park and possibly adding a rock climbing wall. I did not know anything about an aerial adventure park. And to repeat the other gentleman's statement, I go by Redmond all the day, my kid, all the time, my kids are involved in sports at Redmond, nobody ever uses that park. So I would think the same thing, this company would probably be one and done. I think the Park District has bigger concerns with possibly improving the pool that has been neglected for twenty years. I think that money is much more well-spent with the pool than it would be in aerial park. The traffic concerns are immense. That intersection of Wood Dale Road and Montrose that I live on the corner of is very dangerous. There's a one-stop sign on Montrose. The road goes from a four-lane road to a two-lane road right there at that intersection. There's all types of metro traffic early in the morning and late in the afternoon. People going up and down Wood Dale Road, don't let anybody turn off a Montrose. And then we're talking about adding basically what would be another intersection right here. I don't know, I'm not good on maps, but what's that, five hundred feet away would basically be two intersections, and that one wouldn't have a stop sign. So I don't even know how these people would get in and out of the park during the afternoon rush with the metro traffic. So that's, that's largely my concern. I'll repeat what Kim has said about the park. You know, we're, we're, the park at Calvary Church, we're very close to that too, and can hear everything going on there. Sometimes at two in the morning, people relieve themselves all over the neighborhood in our alley. I found feces up against my fence in that alley. So it's just, it's not a good idea. I know the Park District is largely the concern of this and has the final approval, but I would urge all the aldermen to voice what you're hearing tonight and let the Park District know of our concerns and our opposition to this project. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Melissa Stoll, one four five South Cedar in Wood Dale. And one of the things that I continually find puzzling about this plan is that supposedly this aerial course is set up in such a way, it doesn't drill into the trees and it's, they use compression fittings to attach the cables and everything else to the trees. And I really am very curious as to how this works because the only living part of a tree is about a, it's a few millimeters of its tissue underneath the bark. That's where the vascular system is for a tree, aside from, of course, the green leaves on it. The remaining trunk wood that's the support for the tree is dead. So as soon as you start to do two things to a tree, one, girdle it, which is removal of a strip of bark that encircles the tree, you will immediate, that will kill the tree because you are literally decapitating it. The vascular system exposed dries out and the tree dies. The other thing you can do is put a compression fitting on it, and it will kill the tree because you are strangling it with the compression. So given, and now, now learned that there's only a one-year history of the company utilizing this system, engineering system, I don't quite get how this isn't going to harm the trees. What history is there of not harming the environment? And given the other things I've seen with, they talk about clearing it out, again, to put in a meadow land in the middle of a forest, doesn't sound eco-friendly to me for the ecology that's here. The, they talk about how a, the, for the first time, I've seen a picture of what's going to replace the cabin, nice natural-looking stone and wood structure that has history for this town since it was built by, I believe, the relations of the Viedson family in the nineteen twenties. And it is one of the oldest, if not the oldest, building in town, that that's due for demolition. My God, because apparently there's some lead pipes in there and probably about, what, ten fair, square feet of ceiling that might have asbestos in it, and this is why it's going to be taken down. And this estimate of a million point four dollars to replace, to, to renovate this, when a cabin, you could buy and build a kit cabin for less than that, you know, half of that at least. You can go on Menards and buy it. I don't understand this. Demolition of our history and no proven track record for an engineering system that's supposed to protect the plants and are not. The other thing, I've seen how the, currently, the Park District is utilizing to clear the land for use. And what I've seen is going to be more indicative of more damage to the area, going in with equipment such as bobcats to clear an area which they demonstrated doing along Montrose. They wanted to clear it out undergrowth in there and cut down trees. And even something as machinery goes, that's as lightweight as a bobcat, is still heavy equipment. It compresses the soil, kills off the flora because it cannot come, make its way up through the compressed soil. And the oak trees that are in there have a very tenuous, but necessary root system. You have its major tap roots that anchor it into the ground, but it also has a network of feeder roots that as soon as you go through and churn up the soil around the base of the tree, again, you're effectively, you know, slitting its carotid arteries here. It can't get the nutrients up out of the compressed soil to continue growing. So it damages it again. And I don't understand this. Bensonville, who bought two plots of land for Park District, for their Park District use here within the borders of Wood Dale, the one acreage point on Wood Dale Road near Elizabeth Drive, and the other, let's see, it's off of Central, is it Hiawatha or Tioga Trail? They have the old bird sanctuary, the property that used to be a bird sanctuary, bird sanctuary for the owners who last had it. And when, for the two or three years now that Bensonville has owned the property on Wood Dale Road, at least once during the year, they have a volunteer day where people are going in with shovels and trowels to minimize the damage to the ground flora, and they're hand-clearing out the invasive species, which, yes, that does need to be cleared out, but you don't go through and do it with bobcats and heavy mechanized equipment if you want to keep your forest. So there, there is so much in question here that the head of this Park District says he's answered all the questions. No, I see a lot of gloss and, and polished brass in answers, and an ignoring of a roomful of people at every meeting that I've attended that don't want this park and they want minimal disturbance and development to the property that's here, so it can be enjoyed as nature intended it to be, not as Mister, you know, wanna make a buck up here wants it to be.
Thank you, Mrs. Stoll.
My name's Don Sanamore. I live at two one five Murray Drive in Wood Dale. Again, I'm always a little nervous talking in front of a group, so bear with me. I'll try to keep condensed and not repeat what's been said. I can probably say that the majority of the people in this room are against the approval of a special permit, but I do support revitalization of the park. I was gonna ask how many people in this room were part of the Park District survey, but I can't ask that, but I'd imagine the answer would be nobody. The White Oaks Improvement Plan that the Park District presents, Phase One, it states, front page, "Construction of a new recreation building." Then you go to page eight of the program. It says, "This building is not a rec center." So what is it? Is it a rec center or it's not a rec center? Does the Park District know what they're gonna spend five million dollars on? And the city council pledged one point five million dollars to this project? And they can't even state the purpose of the building? I'll tell you one thing, I knew about the, the Edge Adventures. I didn't know about a new office building that was gonna be built on this site so it can house Edge Adventures and the Park District's personnel that want a new office because they want to get out of the shed area that they're in right now for the two to five million dollars that the taxpayers are gonna pay. Then we go to the heralded three-phase program that we have, Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three. Can anybody tell me why the following items on Phase Three are designated to be done Phase Three, creation of new dog-friendly area, addition of children's playground, new gazebo, new scout area, improvements to the existing trail, additional Spartan course. But now, let's look at Phase One. Demolition of the cabin, redevelopment of the parking area, a new recreation building, and we already have a rec center, but now we need two. Can somebody tell me, can somebody tell me the capacity of our current rec center that we need to have another one? Or is it an office building? Because the, the Park District wants new fancy offices, and of course, we have to supply a, a, an office and a, and a, a supply area for the new for-profit company that's coming into the park. We have lots of money to spend stuff on there. Every business gets a five-million-dollar office building, right, when they come in So all the items listed in Phase One are direct support for the adventure park only. The cost of this phase, seven million dollars, ten million dollars? Nobody seems to know the amount. They never can get an answer. But it doesn't matter because the Park District's gonna issue bonds and borrow a bunch of money to build all this. And guess what? Guess who gets to pay for it all? We do, and higher taxes. So I do ask this committee, does this committee support a parking lot over the Boy Scouts? Does this committee support landscaping in identified areas over a children's playground? Does this committee support an open meadow, which is only being created to have a direct site of the adventure park, over a dog park? I ask this committee to vote no on the special use permit at this time, so the city can get more involved in this project and reassess the priorities of this park. I ask the committee to vote no, because there's not enough parking. Calvary Church has not entered to any agreement with the Park District, even though they said they did. Oak Brook School, that's the overflow? Well, that's great, but what are you gonna do from June? Or what are you gonna do, uh, from April? I'm sorry. What do you, June through August, there's no school. But what about April, May, September, and October, when it's being used? There's not enough parking. How can you approve this plan when they don't even have enough parking? That's part of the, part of the zoning commitment. The two-hundred-and-fifty-foot rule, which was brought up, who established that distance as acceptable? The Park District? What authority deemed this as acceptable? What sound tests have been completed? Did, did anybody at least run twenty-five people into the park and have them scream at the top of their lungs to see if you could hear it? Was this done? I'm not aware of it. And again, can someone give me the report as to the capacity of the current Wood Dale rec center to justify building another building? And I'm not sure what this is, but the Park District is requesting that they get waived the performance security requirement. I don't even know what that is, but they want it waived. Apparently, they're above everything else. Too many questions, not enough answers to vote yes.
Thank you.
I'm not quite done. Almost done, though.
You got like ten seconds, because we got other people.
I ask the residents of Wood Dale to contact their alderman, mayor, and Park District and ask where all the money's coming from to pay for this Phase One, which will benefit a private for-profit company and a public park. This project is wrong on so many levels, but it's up to you, council, to decide if you will make the right decision or the wrong decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Deborah Spiven. I live in two sixteen Hiawatha, Wood Dale. Other teachers, more knowledgeable and understandable explanations, they did very nicely, but I just felt what I'd like to talk, talk one word. We have now Wooddale Road, two lanes, right? Two-lane road. You're gonna make a four-lane road from the, what's that? The, Thunder Road to the Third Avenue over there, or Third Avenue, you, you're gonna make a four-lane road? That's what I'm questioning. If you can make, maybe you can think about, but you cannot make, other than you, you make all the way four, four-lane, four-lane road if you, the, what's that? County approved it there, one, you can try talking about my, I say that. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm against that. So I'm, I don't have knowledge of what they, what they see the community business, but this is out of culture, out of, out of nothing. No place. That's it.
My name is Lou Castiello. I live at one forty-four South Cedar. I moved to Wood Dale twenty-one years ago because of the word "Wood Dale." We like the woods. You know, I, I listened to all this and I've read the research and I think to myself, I like the fact that I'm a contractor and I come home and my backyard is quiet, and it gives me a little piece of country. So it gives me a way to get rid of the stuff I deal with all day long. I'm a contractor that builds restaurants. I look at that Cabin Nature Center and say, "Why can't we make it a community event? Why can't we all pitch in and rebuild what's there?" I'm sure with the people that are here and the people that have the knowledge, we could, we could preserve that history, not to mention the deer and all the animals that won't be there anymore. And that's why we moved to Wood Dale, and that's why there's a Cabin Nature Center. We don't want kids screaming and yelling, swinging from trees, and having what they would consider a good time. This is Wood Dale. I think we're losing sight of that. Thanks.
Thank you.
One more thing. I, I have to talk. I have a right to talk. I love, I love this country. I love Wood Dale. I love all the citizens, and I love everything. I love children. I don't have children, but I love children. I love the children, but the children gotta be safe, and people gotta all love, but it's not the place. not the place to put the children right there, please. I don't think so.
Thank you.
I'm Mary Castiello. I live at 144 South Cedar. I'm gonna look at every single one of you, and I hope everybody in this room does when time election comes, if you guys vote for this, the support for this. Because I'm gonna tell you, I shouldn't say the word "lie," but they said they did a survey around our neighborhood. I personally went to every house I could around the neighborhood, and I hit pretty much of all you people. Not one person got a survey. I certainly didn't. So I don't know where this survey came up and who said that they were for this. Okay? That's number two. This is the first I've ever heard of a playground. We have two playgrounds. There's one by the school, and there's one by Calvary Church. Why do we need another playground? Okay. The other thing is, I hope you take the nature out of the nature center, because there's no, there's not gonna be any nature. I live right where the deer go through all the time. People love it. People in the area, they love to walk through those woods because it's quiet and peaceful. It's the whole purpose of that nature center. The nature center, that's why it was donated or given or whatever it is, it doesn't even matter. It's why we have it. It's the only thing we have in Wooddale, that he has the woods that we can walk through a trail. It's the only thing. Why are you taking that away from us, from the whole community? There's people from all over that go to their community. And then the other thing I wanna ask, this is kind of important, because you always follow the money. Why Edge Adventure? Were there any proposals for anybody else? Have we heard about any proposals for any other company to come in and do this? And I don't wanna say the word "lie," but I've been at these meetings, that's the first time I saw the Edge Adventure go all the way to where it is. They told us in the very first meeting, which I wasn't approved for the venture park anyways, that it was in the front. It was only gonna be in the front. Now all of a sudden, it's the whole nature center. Okay? That's, to me, that's a lie. Okay? And if you guys wanna make, first of all, I don't even know why we're doing this, for Edge, we're taking an outside company to come in. You guys wanna make money? I'll tell you what. Have the dog park, have the residents pay a small fee, have the outside people pay 40, 50 bucks. You'll get that annually, every year. And there's a lot of good things that come out of that, because you can make sure that the dogs are vaccinated before they go in there, which they aren't, and they're not dangerous dogs, which every other community does. Why aren't we doing that? And then I went to that dog park this week, all week, and I talked to the people there. Guess how many people were Wooddale residents? None. Not one person was from Wooddale. Okay? And trust me, I asked every single one of them. And, you know, they're all upset, you know, they're all upset about the dog park going away, but you know why? Because it's the only free one. They're coming from all over. That's potential moneymakers. What's wrong with you people? It's potential. We can make money doing this. Why aren't you looking at that instead of this, having an outside company make money? And don't tell me that our residents are gonna be able to support $40 to $50 for them to go on this Edgewater Trail through there. The only way, this company knows that, the only way they're gonna be making money is they're bussing people in. I mean, I'm so disappointed. I came to this town from a corrupt town, I'm not even gonna go there, but I came to this town because I thought it wasn't corrupt. But, you know, I'm kinda thinking I made a mistake, and I'm really sorry, and I do not support the special permit. And besides the fact, in 2017, I did talk to Matt, and Matt was very open. I said, we would all help. I would start a committee to go in there, take out the buckthor and help clean up. I had the emails to prove that. I thought this was shelved. You know, we're all, every single one of us is offering to prove that nature center, and we would help. I know we would. I know you all would. Why are you, I don't understand why you people are doing that, unless you follow the money. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
My name is Janet Rubrite. I live at 123 Oak. I'm a little bit nervous, too. I hate talking in front of people. But, two things, or probably three or four. One, see what we did in a couple of days? See all these people? We got all these people together about this park. Where, how did the Park District not be able to get people in their opinion? I don't know. How did they not get it? Because they weren't giving us the information for us to give our opinion on. So this is what we could do as a community, right here, which I'm very proud of, actually. Number two, I don't, I know you guys, your job right now is not to sit here and go through all the paperwork that all this led up to, but I did it. I did the homework. And the false statements that are put in these minutes, and the fact that this board shelved this idea at the October 2016 Park District meeting and said, we are not gonna discuss it. And then it kept coming up and kept coming up by the director. And then, there is another plan in here, I believe from August of 2017, that again, does not include Edge Adventures. I have the contract that they signed with Edge Adventures. Did you all see that? Did you all see what they're gonna do? How much they're paying for this leasing of this land? Do you guys know what that is? Because I could make copies. I think if you would read everything, and I could put this all together for you and make it very simple for you to see how this whole process happened, you would be just as appalled as we are. It's shameful. But, look what it did. It brought a community together, and I do not want this to go through. And I will continue and continue to investigate. This is a week's worth of stuff. This is nothing. I have spent hours on this. I will spend more and more and more, and I bet you, I find more and more and more every single day.
I live at 101 North Walnut. I'm across from Calvary Church. I'm across from the nature center. One of the questions I have for all of you is, I'd like clarification as to who is on the deed of this property. This property is split into three different sections. There's a parcel number, and then there's a dash 001, a dash 002, and a dash 003. And I'm under the impression that in 1996, the city annexed it from the Park District. I've spent a number of hours at the DuPage County Recorder Deeds in the past few days, and I've asked them. I've gone back on this property to 1890 to find out who the owners were. And I am told by the DuPage County Recorder Deeds that the city of Wooddale currently owns this property. So I'm very confused, because I have all the city officials telling me, the Park District owns this property, and they can do what they want, they're a separate governing body, and you guys can't tell them what to do with their property. Well, I really would like clarification as to what gives them the authority to do what they're doing to this. Regardless if the city owns this, or if the Wooddale Park District owns this, is this good stewardship of a nature center? Are we being good stewards of this 18-acre property? These aerial parks, these aerial parks are really cool. They are really fun. They're, most aerial parks are in areas that are in 100, 200-plus acre areas that aren't surrounded on all of our sites by residents. This is a residential area. This is not a commercial area. I don't know where anybody gets off zoning it for commercial. It's a nature center. It's a public park. This is for us. This is for our use. This is for everybody's use. It's not, it's not for the commercialization of an adventure park. At a cost of $5 million. Well, all right, whatever. So I'd like clarification, who owns it? What gives them the right to do what they're doing? And zoning it commercial is just a ridiculous proposition. Everybody else talked about the residents' lack of knowledge regarding that. I will ditto that. Everybody I talked to in my area now knows about this. Prior to the past few days, they had no clue. But now, but now they're informed. I'd also like to talk about the traffic study. You know, I'm on the corner there of Walnut and Montrose. There's a park across the street, and it is so fun to hear the kids over there yelling and screaming and having a good time at that park. There's a lot of traffic on Montrose, pedestrian traffic, moms, dads, kids, tricycles, bicycles, dogs. People walking two and three dogs at a time. There's a lot of pedestrian traffic. There's a lot of pedestrian traffic on Wooddale Road. Did this traffic study take this into account? Has the police department seen this traffic study? Have they approved of this? I mean, certainly, they're there around that area all the time. They're aware of all the pedestrian traffic. I just don't see how this can be approved, this traffic study, without taking a look at the pedestrians. I'll just add, pretty much everybody else has said what I've had on my mind, but what I will tell this committee is, this project has too many holes in it. There's just too many holes for you guys to go forward and approve this, based on everything else that has been said here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Stoll, no, no, no.
Yes, you know what? With all due respect, sir, nobody on this side of the dais has limited or requested you to talk for three minutes. Would somebody here please grant me their three-minute time? Is there anybody? Thank you.
No, Ms. Stoll, that's not the way it works.
There is.
You, no.
I had a suggestion.
I respectfully am gonna ask you to sit down, please.
I have a suggestion.
Ms. Stoll, would you respectfully please take the seat?
That is, there are other amenities in this town which can be utilized for money-making propositions, such as the pond across from the Park District. Somebody's, I'm not looking for a confrontation.
We have to follow the form of the word.
I am. With all due respect, I've been granted time from another person who doesn't wanna get up, and they're allowed the use of their three-minute time.
Let me review.
There are other amenities around this town, such as the lake up on Wooddale Road, which could be developed into a canoe and paddleboat rental area if you're really into making money. There are other ways to do this. It's up, you got the industrial park area up there that's already zoned for commercial and has better access to utilizing that. And that lake has never been utilized for anything but a few people going in and fishing. Put a trail around there, plant some trees, put your aerial course there in about 20 years. Just one suggestion off the top of the head.
Thank you.
Kristen Trontidoo, 106 Oak. This is really a zoning issue and safety, but I live the second house off of Oak Avenue in Montrose. And I played the video, and I looked at the footage, and it was pretty clear to me there's supposed to be a 250-foot distance between the aerial excursions and property lines. Do you see how close that green line is to Montrose Avenue? Then you count the street, then the little easement. That's not 250 feet from my neighbor's property line. So you didn't meet the requirements that you say you met. And I heard a lot of the word "deviation" in this plan. I think, I think things need to be rethought. Our area, I've been told by several people, is, well, besides the plains, but is a more desired area because it's quiet. Why are you guys gonna take this away from us? He doesn't even live here to make that decision. But they don't meet their requirement. People are gonna be driving down Montrose Road, and you are gonna see people through the woods, because they took out a lot of that along the street. You're gonna see people on those excursions, those adventures, in the air. It's very distracting. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Chris Molinaro. I'm from 112 North Walnut, which is right about where the S in proposed it. And I'm up here because I am against this idea, and my wife, Kim, spoke earlier, and if I don't speak, I'll probably hear about it later, so. Really, I don't have a lot to add. I mean, there's a lot of people here who probably know a lot more about this than I do. The things that I would add would be to echo what everybody said about the survey. I didn't see a survey come across about this. I know that in the past, the Park District has done surveys. I remember getting one about the pool, and it had a general question like, would you like more pool hours? Yeah, well, most people would say, yeah, I'd like more pool hours. But they don't want pool hours at the Wooddale Pool, because it's not like the best pool. It's not even the second-best pool. You know, there's a lot of investment that could be made in bringing that asset up to speed, instead of taking something that all these people seem to really value as it is, and putting an aerial course in it. You know, it's, the other thing that I would add about it is the safety aspect, which was touched on earlier. We live right next to the park, and I know that when we moved into that house, the park was redone a couple of years after we moved into it. And, you know, they used to have those little rocking animals at the park. And I think it was probably broke four times, maybe even more than that. Looking for confirmation, so that's what I got. And you guys are there all the time, and we appreciate, you know, you guys camping out in the parking lot, but the fact is, is that when kids get the opportunity to do something, you know, be kids, I mean, that's what they do, you know, that's, they ended up basically saying, okay, we're not gonna have these rocking animals anymore, because they're just, it's not worth having it. They get, they get broke, and that's with all the police presence there. So I'm looking at this, and I don't know, if I was a kid, I think I'd be trying to get into that park, so. Basically, that's all I gotta say. I mean, I'm against it. I like the idea of upgrading the park. I think it's way too close to the road. I don't like, I think the traffic is gonna be a nightmare there, and I hope you guys rethink your vote on it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Edward Straka, and I live right here. Right there. I don't know where anybody else in here lives. All the stuff that people have talked about so far.
Mr. Straka, could you give us the address?
Excuse me?
Could you give us the address for the record?
207 East Highwater.
Thank you.
I don't know where everybody up here lives, or in here, but we live right there. Almost from day one, when we moved into that house, five years ago, we've been cleaning things up. And still cleaning things up. When you take this along here and cut this out of here and clean it up, everything that comes across here, the bowls cross.
Mr. Straka?
Yes.
Could you, could you stay by the mic? Because this is being recorded, so people that are watching at home can hear you.
Sorry. You take the upper area that was cleaned up, which it should be, this trees cared for, garbage. For those who don't know where that is, it's just on the road from here. Drive by it. You look in, you look in the amount of garbage that we took out of that place, and the amount of garbage that still comes across there. You look out into the trees, you see the animals going through there. Why is it not even being taken care of? What's gonna happen? What's gonna happen when we spend $5 million to take and basically improve this and turn around and just basically watch it go like this? Why don't you do it the other way around? Take and clean it up first. See if anybody even wants to go there, besides putting $5 or $6 million up in the air. If you think $5 million is gonna cover this... If you think $5 million is going to cover this, go on to Google and research what construction is. It'll tell you right what construction is, what the cost is. When you think it's going to be this, add 30%, add 50%. Because once you start, it goes like this quickly. But the thing of it is, on the flip side, six years from now, when you spend all this money and this mess is still here, we will have to deal with it. So back to my original statement, where do you live?
Not there. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Janet Trumeneer, and I live at 206 Hiawatha. And I live right across the street from Ed, so I know exactly what he's talking about, because I see that every day as well. I've been a resident of Wooddale for less than three years. One of the reasons why I bought my property is because I was bought up against the nature center, and I knew it was going to be quiet, and it was going to be safe. But if this comes in to my backyard, like his backyard, and anyone else who lives around the perimeter, that's gone, okay? It's just, I guess, another disappointment if this really happens. Because I don't want to have to become the police and watch that park and say, "Oh, look, someone's hanging from a tree. I'd better call the police," after the park is closed, because it's not being monitored. That's not why I moved to Wooddale. So I really hope that you say no, because I really don't want to be disappointed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kim Madrigal. I live in 173 Murray Drive. And some of you were here the last meeting. You remember, I referred to my eight-year-old son, who was crying. Well, he's standing right over there. And I would like all of you to explain to him what is going to... Has there been any wilderness people come in to talk about the animals? What's going to happen to all these poor animals that are going to be losing their area to live in? Can anybody explain? Have you talked to any, any professionals in that area? We have deer that come to our backyard. They are the most beautiful animals. And like we said, it's a wilderness nature center. You've talked about all the other experts you've talked to. Not once have I heard anything talking about animal experts and people to deal with those poor animals that are going to lose their area. Another thing I want to bring up, which told the perfect story of everything we're all talking about, when we have, I don't know if a president or vice president, I apologize, of the school board just found out about this four days ago. If that doesn't tell a story, then none of us, the entire town, did not know anything about this. And can clarify, please, are taxpayers going to be paying for all of this?
Yes.
But yet you don't tell any of us about it. And again, my eight-year-old son is staying there. Can somebody explain to him what's going to happen to all those animals? And how, why we're taking away the beautiful backyard that he loves and that beautiful area, and why we loved the area that we lived in?
Anybody else like to speak? Okay.
My name is Andre Madrigal, and I live at 173 Murray Drive. I'm Kim's husband. I moved here about 25 years ago. And the reason why I moved, and somebody mentioned that before, I love the woods. I love Wooddale. I had other opportunities to live in other towns. I came to Wooddale because there was a lot of woods. There was a nice forest. I was told as a realtor that the county or the Forest Reserve owned that land, and that land would never be touched. And that's the reason why I moved in. Now, I saw one of the emails that you guys supposedly met with everybody at Murray Drive a year ago. That you, you guys talked to everybody, the Alderman talked to, that everybody in Murray Drive, and everybody was in agreement. How many of you are in agreement that this should be?
Nobody talked to them.
There's not one person here, there's not one person in Murray Drive that agrees with what you guys are proposing. Now, my understanding, you guys are pretty much working for us, right?
Sir, could I, could I just interject one? We didn't send a survey, we didn't talk to the, it was the Park District?
Somebody did, somebody did.
Just, just for clarification.
But whatever.
Okay, thank you.
Generally speaking, the Park District is, you guys are a public entity, right? You guys work for the taxpayers, right? With the taxpayers. We're telling you, we don't want this, okay? The other thing, you guys are public. Why are you trying to become private, trying to make money, invest? Leave that to the professionals, people that can actually make money. I don't think...how many public entities actually make money? This is a black hole. You guys are just going to keep pouring money into this thing. You're not going to make any money. The professionals, your competition, they're going to make the money. They're going to take all the business from you, and you're going to have very little business. You are going to lose money, and who's going to pay for that? We are, because you're going to have a deficit. You guys have any expertise in running this type of business? Do you? Does anybody have any expertise? Have you run this type of business before? Do you know what you're doing? There's companies out there that this is, this is what they've been doing all their lives. Don't make money. You guys won't make any money. You guys are just going to make us miserable, which we are. Now, if this goes through, we're going to take names, we've got petitions. Any voting position that's here, and I don't know who, who you guys are, you guys will be a marked person. You guys will be voted out of office. And I'll make sure of that, along with a lot of these people here. So before you move forward, think about that. All the taxpayers here, we pay your salary. We don't want this. That's all. Now, if you guys want to move and proceed and do what the taxpayers don't want, I mean, this is just like Washington. Politicians do whatever they want, not what the people want. We're telling you, we don't want this. If you want to move forward, there's consequences. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Rich Peterson. I live at 347 Tioga Trail. I've been a resident of Wooddale for almost 23 years. I think what all this boils down to tonight is a matter of respect. And as I look on the city council tonight, I see a lot of disdain for these people out here. I think it's real important that you listen to their wishes and reject this plan. Thank you very much.
Does anybody else wish to speak? If not, Alderman Roy Wesley?
Ms. Christie, I got a couple of questions for you. Wooddale Road is a county road. Was there a traffic study done at the county level to see what, what the county feels about the traffic over there?
Ms. Christie?
The traffic study was completed by a company that was hired by the Park District and evaluated by the city engineer in terms of concurrence.
So does... So the question was, is the county informed of this project and of that road, because it is their road?
Ms. Christie?
They are aware of the project. They have not yet received the traffic study to review.
I have a couple more questions.
Sure, go ahead.
The surveys that were done, did, did we get a copy of our surveys from the Park District?
Ms. Christie?
No, we did not. That is not part of the typical public hearing process, and therefore, we did not request it.
Okay. My next question is, how many feet is that away from Montrose?
I do not know what the distance requirement is, but I will note that there is no zoning requirement. The 250 feet is an agreement that the Park District has with Edge Adventures.
On that...
Mr. Wesley?
On that motion, I thank everyone for coming out. This is great that you're involved with your city and that you have your input. I have a lot of questions on this that I don't have answers for. And I'm going to make a motion to table until I get my answers.
Alderman Messina?
I had a lot to say. I'm coming off an eight-hour flight, so the jet lag just hit me, and I'm out of coffee. So I'm one of the Ward 1 Aldermen. And I did, I did walk on Murray, along with Alderman Jacob, to get treacle. Didn't catch a lot of people, but I think for the most part, most people know kind of where we're...
Was there a second? I want to make sure, I heard a second.
I don't, I didn't hear a second.
I didn't hear a second.
Okay. Okay.
I remake my motion after, after the...
Because if we had a motion and a second, we had to take the roll.
I understand.
I just want to make sure we're...
I understand.
Yeah, no, it's okay. I think it's pretty straightforward. I don't think you need to make a motion to table it to force these people to come back, right? I, I heard, I, I heard the phone calls. And I'm in a foreign country, taking calls from people and talking to them, and playing devil's advocate. Some people probably in that audience think I felt a certain way. You guys netted it out. It comes down to this. There's holes in the plan. What I would ask you is there is holes in some of the knowledge, and part of that is because of the poor communication by the Park District. So some of the feedback that I've gone back to you guys and said, "Hey, you're wrong. You got a this, 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 this," was really to make sure that we understand. We need more information. There is a lot of holes. And as a resident, yeah, I may, I may not live right there, but I get it. I get it, the traffic, a lot of... Eight hours is a long time on a plane, so I, I had a lot of questions, and I still have 10 more. And Matt, I gave Matt all the questions when I was in attendance, and he did. He's done everything in his power to answer them. I'm not saying there are answers you want to hear. But what I am saying, as I think about all that, the project was well-intentioned. There is way too much, way too much in question to even remotely think about it. The communication's not there. I'm proposing we do not move forward with this. And I'm sorry, I know you guys put a lot of time. Well, hang on, as I wrap this up, I do want to say that I thank you guys for coming out. You will hear from me when we have a city volunteer event, because we need to get a lot of people here. Why don't you get this guy to be... No, but really, thank you, thank you for coming out. There's a lot of voices that we've never heard from, and then the usual voices. So thank you for that. I will make a motion to...
There's a motion to table.
Okay.
Is that what you're going to do?
No. What a motion, wait. Wait, may I, may I? The motion that was seconded was to table it?
Right, so you can get these questions answered.
Okay. Okay, wait, hey, can I make a follow-up statement?
No, we have, we have a motion and a second now. We have to take the...
Okay, so we can ask questions.
On the table. Not on the table.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second to table. Roll call.
Alderman Smarsky, second.
He said on the table, you can't ask questions on the table.
So no.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
No, for the benefit of the audience, when there is procedurally, when there is a motion to table, motion to table is not debatable. It requires that the council vote. So there's been a motion to table and a second, so the procedure the council's obligated to follow by law is to proceed to a vote, and again, without discussion. That's not their choice, that's law.
Alderman Sorrentino?
No.
Alderman Jacob?
No.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Can you repeat the motion? Because I don't think people know what they're voting for. This is a motion to table this for another time. That's what the motion is right now.
So you're voting against... Okay, one of the questions are answered.
Okay. Okay, Alderman Catalano?
No.
Alderman Smarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
No.
Alderman Woods?
No.
So that failed.
Alderman Sorrentino?
You know what? All of the unanswered questions, when all is said and done, we're still going to have a safety issue. We're still going to have a lot of noise. As chairman of public safety, it is my obligation to make sure residents, regardless of where they live, are safe. And the park, the teenagers, the adults, the activities, the parking, they came up with some outstanding points. I commend you for coming together as a group. And I voted no before on this, and I'll never stop, so...
I'm the second Alderman in Ward 1, and I've heard a lot of your concerns. And there are a lot of holes in this, and a lot of things, questions that I have that have not been answered. So, I mean, I will be voting no today for this.
Alderman Messina?
So I'd like to make a motion to actually, using the right word, decline this motion until the Park District can come back with, with some modifications and community hearings and a mailer, which I found out you guys never did a mailer. So my motion is to reject this proposal.
Second.
Second.
I already made a motion to say no.
I didn't hear a motion. Roll call.
Let me just grab the agenda item.
Well, we can eliminate that. It's right. Can I clarify my motion? It's Peters.
The proper motion would be a motion to approve the ordinance granting the approval of special use, planned unit development, and major site plan review for redevelopment of White Oaks Park. If it's the desire of an individual, the motion is made in the affirmative. If you don't want that to pass, you vote no. So the proper motion would be a motion to approve the ordinance.
Mayor, please. Pat, just so we're clear, Alderman Messina wants to put in stipulations for the Park District. Is that part of the motion, right, in the affirmative? But everybody's voting no, right? I'm guessing. So, but right, there's a condition.
Right, so if that's the case, the appropriate procedural motion would be a motion to approve a second and then a motion to amend that motion to add whatever conditions have been suggested.
I'm not putting in a motion to approve nothing. Ask someone else.
Hold on a second.
I get it, we can all say no, but I'm not putting a motion in.
Love that. Let me interject. So there's questions to be answered, right?
The motion to table.
The motion to table is what should have went through. Then all that stuff can be brought out, people can be informed. And then everybody can come back and vote on an informed decision.
They voted, they voted.
No, we don't want that.
The table was no. So we're voting on it tonight, one way or another.
Alderman Wesley. Eugene Wesley.
So, I have a couple of questions, on some issues that came up tonight, I don't want to get in a long debate with this, 3:09 o'clock, and I understand the people are here for this, but I have a parking issue that's still unresolved with the church, I have a, I have a parking issue that hasn't been worked out yet, I have an intergovernment agreement or IGA that has not come to this dice yet for this project, that needs to be cleaned out, um, and until we do some more stuff on this, I, I just, I just can't bring my, I cannot vote for this at all right now, until we detail some more info out, so. Well, if we table these, gonna be back at square one again, can these questions answered again the next meeting, I mean, how long we get table to?
Alderman Peter Jacob?
I'll make a motion to approve them so that we could vote the way we want to vote here.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
You know, there was some statements made here tonight, I just want to make it clear that the park to the city is supposed to be put in for this project, is not paid out of the general fund, it's paid out of hotel tax, true, it is a tax, but it's not from the, your property taxes or anything, so I wanted to make that clear. Second thing is, I'd like to know, how much does the Park District have invested in this already, first question, second thing is, is there another park that they could put this in?
You made the joint motion.
Mayor, please.
Pat, okay, so we have a motion to approve Alderman Jacob, Alderman Sorrentino, but, no, 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 relax, take it easy, the council wants more questions answered, and there's definitely a lot of different concerns that came out that didn't come out that first at that hearing. You said a mandatory, that didn't sound right, because how they gonna vote, they're gonna vote no, so that takes care of it, right? That's, and then it's, because nobody here is convinced that the project is ready to go at all.
That's correct, if there's, if it's a, the motion to approve fails, then that puts an end to that item.
But you said something about, they want questions answered, and you said something about a mandatory.
Sure, no, I, I was under the impression that Alderman Messina had certain conditions he wanted to impose on, on this project, and if that were the case, then it would be, in order to get those conditions appended to council action, it would have to be first a motion to approve the ordinance granting the special use, and then a motion to amend that motion to add whatever conditions were being suggested.
I just want to make a statement, so the purpose of, typically, typically, we don't allow the residents to speak at this meeting, you would speak at a council meeting, not at a committee meeting. The reason I personally wanted to hear from you is so that we could investigate those things, those concerns, ultimately, it may get voted down, but I would like to be able to answer all your questions that were raised, and we could address them, and then ultimately it fails, then it, then it fails, but I know the Park District has gone through, and we complain, whether they did it properly or not properly, they have invested a lot of time and a lot of money, and we really owe it to them to address all the questions that are out there.
So, come on.
Alderman Messina?
So, so Attorney Bond, um, I have, we have that motion up there, I guess what I'm hearing is, we want the opportunity, because they have, they have spent a lot of time in this, on this project, if, if this is killed here, do they have the opportunity to go back to the drawing board, absolutely address all that stuff and bring something back, and maybe we vote again on it one year from now, six months from now, 18 months from now, whatever that is. Clearly, this plan is not gonna work. Right, right, is that possible? I guess regardless of the situation, is it possible?
That, that would, the, uh, vote in the negative as to this proposal to approve, in other words, to kill this, that would not come back in this form, could they submit another proposal? They, they certainly could, I defer to our zoning folks, but this would not be, be, well, if, again, if there are conditions and you know what those conditions are, you'd like those conditions, you can add that at this juncture, prior to a vote on this matter, it would be appropriate to do, otherwise, if there's a vote and it's turned down, you can't add conditions after it's been rejected.
So we can answer all my questions? Maybe, but I don't, I don't think it's gonna happen.
Mr. Murmice?
Yeah, just for all those watching at home and everybody in attendance tonight, just procedurally, even, we have to make the vote in the affirmative, as the city attorney had stated, and if the council then votes no, it does then have to proceed to the city council meeting anyway, as Alderman Woods was trying to point out, the committee meeting is just an advisory meeting, the city council can't take a final action at an advisory meeting, they're acting in their committee meeting capacity tonight, so I believe that even with a failure procedurally with this type of item, final action's taken by the city council.
Alderman Wesley? So, City Manager Murmice or Ms. Christie, I just, I guess, so I know procedurally, there are questions I have, am I allowed to ask those questions so that if they do come back, they're prepared a year from now to address those?
Mr. Murmice?
Well, I, even if you voted it down or passed it or did whatever tonight, if there are questions still out there, those questions could be answered in advance of a final vote at a future council meeting to be determined, typically, it's the following week, but I, it does not have to be, it's just the final action needs to be taken by the council, not the committee.
I just don't know how some of us make an informed, I mean, we, I think we all have our decision, but an informed decision, you know, on some of these things. So you're saying I cannot ask the question?
No, you can, you can ask questions, I'm not saying, I'm saying you can ask all the questions you like.
So the question would be addressed to you then, I mean, the biggest thing I have, and I keep, I keep heard a ton of different things, but the big thing that sticks out to me is, the church in the Park District, you guys have this agreement now, right?
They don't.
Or, or they don't, regardless, okay, hang on, hang on, hang on, I have a point to this, a good point to this, uh, the, my point that I'm trying to make is, where is the city in this, and what the heck is going to happen in two years, three years, 10 years, and the, the church says, I'm done with the lease, sorry, then everyone's gonna park on my residence blocks and we can't do anything about it? What happens to that lease if they bring that lease?
Ms. Christie?
So one of the recommended conditions that we added was that they must maintain overflow parking arrangements, and that should they not maintain that, those arrangements, whether it's with the church, or whether it's a school, or some other property, they must maintain those, and if they don't, then the city has the right to revoke the special use approval because that is a condition of that approval.
So you, you honestly believe that condition is going to work, that we're going to revoke their special use and shut down the entire operation? You honestly believe that we are gonna sit here and do that? I mean, is that the condition, is that the best you guys came up with? I'm sorry, but that to me is crazy, out of, out of our mind, that you think that, that is going to fly. You're gonna bring that back up to us and you're gonna say, they didn't meet it, sorry guys, let's just wipe it clean, and let's just crush the, the development, because initially when we were gonna do this, it was, hey, look at all the good for the city. I would, I would just respectfully ask that you guys go to the drawing board and, and figure out a better Plan B, if, if, if this is ever gonna come back up.
Okay, so we have a, a motion and we have a second, let's, let's call a roll, I don't think anything's gonna change.
I'm just asking if the Park District Director has anything to say about it.
No, we can't, no, we can't.
So, what is the motion, and I want, I want to explain, I want to hear it from the, the attorney again, to make sure.
Mr. Bond, could you confirm what the motion is for Mr.?
Give me a yes vote and a no vote.
So, the motion is to approve the draft ordinance granting the approval of special use, planned unit development, and major site plan review for the redevelopment of White Oaks Park, a motion is made in the affirmative for the benefit of the, the public, and if there is a negative vote, that does not pass, as the city manager indicated, that this is a committee of the whole, the committee of the whole is a recommending body, committee of the whole takes action, listens to the concerns that have been expressed here, and they make a recommendation to the city council, the, this body does not have the legal authority to make a final binding decision, the only, statutorily, under the Illinois statute, the municipal code, the city council is the only entity that has that authority, so this matter would then be placed on a future city council agenda, and at that time, the matter would be brought for final action on that particular item, coming to the council with whatever vote comes out of this committee. If at that time there are questions that still need to be answered, the council can, if they wish, can impose additional conditions, uh, and can entertain additional debate on that particular issue.
Mr. Murmice?
Typically, the agenda items from committee are the following week, sometimes they're not, but typically they are, depending on the docket.
Mayor, please.
Jeff, we need to put this on the agenda for next week, because they have questions, so this is gonna get voted down, there's a lot of unanswered questions.
Mr. Murmice?
I, I have in my notes, um, to put it on for next week, but I also have in my notes to talk to PD about a potential concern about having too many people here, because as you know, the next council meeting, I shouldn't say next week, well, actually, next week is the next council meeting, we have student government night, and we will have a high number of kids here with their parents, so if all the residents come out for this topic, in addition to the, to the, to the kids, it's gonna be, it's gonna be too much for one night.
Push it to the.
Hello?
Push it to the second. Alderman Roy Wesley?
Mr. Bond, doesn't the chair of the committee have the right to put it on the agenda at the council meeting at a later date, much later date, if possible?
Well, again, it can be, the typical process is it's been done at the council meeting immediately following the committee recommendation.
But it can't.
Legally, it can.
So Jeff, are there any, Mr. Murmice?
The only issue is I would hate to tell the kids not to come at that meeting, and they're gonna come, and their parents are gonna come, and it's gonna be packed, so.
No.
No, there's no procedural problem with that, to pushing it to May 17th, I believe.
All right, so, being no further questions, we have a motion, we have a second, the motion is to approve, in case anybody forgot. Uh, roll call.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Abstain.
Alderman Sorrentino?
No.
Alderman Jacob?
No.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
No.
Alderman Catalano?
No.
Alderman Sizarski?
No.
Alderman Messina?
Do you have to think about this?
No.
Alderman Woods?
Next approval to the, uh, draft facade improvement grant agreement for improvements at 170 Irving Park Road.
I'll make that motion, second.
Any questions? Roll call.
Is there a dollar mark?
I'll make the motion then, uh, to approve the draft for facade improvement agreement in the amount of $13,278 for improvements at 170 West Irving Park Road, in an amount not to exceed $37,278. And 00 USD.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Alderman Catalano, one second. Roll call. Mr. Jacob?
Um, I do have a question on this, we approved this along, I mean, when did we approve this originally? How long has it been?
Ms. Christie?
I believe it was in June of last year.
Okay, I mean, I am for approving this, but they, we approved this June of last year, that's almost a year ago, and nothing's been done, so I would like to add some kind of timeline on it, because this is not gonna be, I don't want to be here a year from now, June, with nothing being done at this property.
Mr. Murmice, if you want to clarify.
Yeah, sure, to clarify, what we had approved in the past, I believe, was a variance or special use for the actual daycare center, we never approved any facade improvement money, um, the applicant has been working with the city, and their engineers and our engineers to, um, you know, get final, um, sign-offs on some of the stormwater concerns in the area, and, um, to coordinate their facade improvement grant with the project overall, so it is moving forward, but we never approved this component of it, so this does help the applicant out with this, this component.
Mayor, please.
Just so we're clear, so, when they came in, they came in for the special use, we granted the special use, then they realized that we offer facade money, they went through the process, but they had to get their engineering, their drawings, and, I mean, it's taken time, so that's why it's taken, whatever, you know, and there's no timeline, if they want to take a year, they can take a year, but they went through the process, the criteria's in the thing, that's basically, that's why it's taken so long, otherwise.
Okay, well, again, I just want to make sure this project gets done, I have no problem giving the money, I just want to make sure this is gonna get off the ground here.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
No, maybe I better not say no.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, being no further questions, roll call.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizarski?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes. That passes, next items to be considered at future meetings, train station signage May 10th, street banner purchase June 14th, Thorndale corridor zoning 2018, is there anything else anybody else would like to address or put on, if there being none, I make a motion adjourned. Mr. Murmice?
Sorry, just, I just want to make sure, just as a courtesy to the residents that did come tonight, just, because I know there was confusion with the motions, the next time you have to come, if you'd like to find out the, the final vote for the White Oaks or voice your opinion again, would be May 17th, Thursday night at 7:30.
And at that meeting, you are legally allowed to talk, that meeting, not that you didn't talk this evening, but it's allowed for. Thank you.
I'm going home with them.
I made a motion, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. No question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.
We're gonna take a 10-minute recess, we convene at 9:30 for the Public Health and Safety Committee.